Is there anything under other, Councilman Weiner?
Thank you. Mr. President, members of council, I'd like to talk about the resolutions that I tabled after listening to council members concerning videotaping council and posting it to the county website. Now, what I just said is different than what I had originally talked about, but there were a number of people around this table that had very constructive suggestions: Councilwoman Kilpatrick, President Protém, yourself, and others. And as I said, I tabled it to work it through. One of the other suggestions was that we're a separate branch of government and the executive branch should have nothing to do with our making our hearings more accessible. It should be something that we do, we choose to do. As technology chair, I decided, rather than have a budgetary concern about it initially, to do a test run. And at the cost of my campaign, I videotaped the last technology committee meeting. I know I passed an email on to all of you, and I'm going to be distributing in your boxes a DVD of that. It is important for those of you that want to see it to take a look at it and see what you think about the idea. Obviously, we've all seen ourselves on, whether it's radio or television or the news site, to a certain extent. The only difference here is it's the whole meeting. And it's, there is space on our county council website where we have the audio link to put a video link next to it, so that the public, not in real time, which would be more expensive, but in delayed time, just when the audio posting goes up, there could be a video posting as well. So, we're going to do this in baby steps, in my opinion. I'm going to continue to work through some suggestions. As a courtesy, I want to let you know that tonight I'm again paying for camera company, which is OK Video in Councilman Cardia's district, to do a video of our council meeting. This will be another chance for you to take a look at it and see what you think of the idea. And in a few weeks or a month or so, I'm going to come back with a reworked resolution that addresses some of the concerns, or all of the concerns, that you've raised except for one. And that one I can't address. And that is the one that some council members may pontificate. Now, I might just say that council members can do that and probably have done that already. And that's not something I can address. But hopefully, the other issues I think I can address. I've spoken to some of the city council members, and they've sort of, if I can use a metaphor, scratched their heads and wondered, what's the big deal? But it is a big deal because it's a change. It's a change in our culture. So, we need to go slowly, and I need to listen to you as I go forward with this. And at this point, I welcome any thoughts. That's all I had to say.
Councilman Smiley?
Councilman Weiner, while I appreciate your desire to further your initiative, personally for me, I object to having someone hired to come in to film when council members have not yet agreed and approved it. And secondly, on another part, and you didn't say how this was to be done tonight, I personally object to a political campaign paying and coming in the chamber to film something that at a later time will be posted to a campaign website. I just think there's two issues there that quite honestly should possibly get a decision from the Ethics Commission before it goes anywhere else. That's my personal opinion, and you may have already done that, I don't know.
Well, on your first contention, and those are real issues, I think they need to be addressed, and I appreciate your bringing them up, about the right of any individual to come in and exercise freedom of press. That's a constitutionally protected act that neither any of us give up simply because we happen to serve on council. Anyone can come with their smartphone and video, all are part of it. And unfortunately, one of the criticisms which were brought up is that if someone did it, they could edit it. And that's a concern. On a video of the whole procedure, should we approve it? It should have the whole timestamp so that it's clear that none of it had been edited down. Right now, we have WDEL that comes in, we've had other radio stations, WILM, we've had news channels come in and videotape portions of us. And they don't ask for our permission because they're not required by law to do so because of the constitutional protection of freedom of speech and freedom of the press. As to the second issue, and that is whether or not, because it's the Friends of Bob Weiner that are paying, that entity is still protected by those same constitutional protections. But I welcome you to bring the issue before the Ethics Commission, and I would stand by whatever they would rule, but my understanding of constitutional law is that I have no less freedoms, either in my campaign or myself, than any other citizen in this United States.
Councilman Smiley?
I understand what you're saying, but we allow WDEL, the news journal, because, and I don't, I'm not familiar with the entity you're talking about, but they are a recognized matter of the press with a public output and venue, be it the news journal or the other. I don't know that what you're, who you have coming in, whether they're considered the press. And again, I'm not up on constitutional law. I don't know that they would fall under those same rights. At the same time, you know, no one's paying them. This is the hiring of someone to come in and film for a purpose that you have. And I'm not saying they have a right to do it, but are they to be afforded the same opportunity? If someone from the audience wants to film, yeah, they have a right to do it, and they're filming it from the audience in the back. They're not being afforded a position up front or wherever where they have more access. You're talking about hiring a group that would actually have more access than the public would have to council. So, again, it's a concern I have. That's all. I mean, I'm not afraid of having my face out there, my words out there, or anything else.
Let me address, you've raised very important issues, and they're not to be made light of. The issue that you raised was because the press comes that we've given them permission. I would say respectfully that we're not giving them permission.
No, we give them a position, is what I'm saying, we let them up front.
I would state that we're not giving them a position, except that they're exercising it from the front. We've never voted on giving them a position. We've never created a rule that deals with that. And I'm certainly not going to do anything different than anyone else in the public can do because we don't have a rule. And the reason why I'm doing this out of my own pocket, if you will, is because the issue of the cost of this beta project shouldn't be borne by council while we're going through this. I'm trying to make this as simple as possible for council. It's sort of like the chicken and the egg. If we had some seed money, then we could go ahead and beta test this. But since we don't, I'm putting the money out of my own pocket, and the purpose to which you allude is simply transparency and openness in government. If I can just refer to one of the aspects of what my withdrawn resolution dealt with, and that is that quoting the News Journal opinion from 12/1913, "Citizens should pay attention to their government. Society should use every means possible to make that act easier, and that includes being able to watch it on a television or a computer screen." And various legislative bodies do this throughout the country. Broadcast by various legislative bodies enhances public trust, greater transparency and accountability. So, until and unless there's a rule during the next month or so while I'm trying to create an opportunity for council to evaluate this, then I'm going to exercise that right. And of course, I respect, council will do what council does, as my venerable colleague usually would say if he were here at this time.
Well, I would just say, and then I'm going to end it for me. Your colleague would say the will of council is the will of council, and the will of council has decided that they didn't want to move forward with this yet. But you are. So, apparently, the will of council is really not the will of council.
Okay. With all due respect, there's been no rule that says that I can't do a demo tape. If it's an issue, I'll make sure that the camera person is behind the fence, if you will. If that addresses your issue, I'll make sure that's done. Although, we have no rule to that effect, but I don't want to have a diversionary issue. I'm trying to make this as simple as possible for council to evaluate.
And my opinion is that would provide them the same latitude that the public would have at this point in time.
Well, I would take acceptance of that, but I don't want to get into that side issue. I think that diverts from what the real issue here is, and that's transparency. So, I'll just direct the camera person to be behind the bench, if you will, behind the bar.
I appreciate it.
Councilwoman Diller?
Councilman Weiner, I appreciate what I think is a good faith effort. But I do think that pushing the envelope like this without having a conversation about this and getting some sort of consensus from your colleagues is probably not the best way to handle this. And if you want to push this, you know, we all have a right to our opinions, but at this point, council has not as a whole said that they are for this. And, I mean, bringing this to people now, two hours before the meeting, it feels like we're being pushed in a way, and we don't really have any recourse. So, I'm with Councilwoman Smiley. I'd feel much more comfortable if they were behind us at this point until all our colleagues get a chance to weigh in on this thing.
Well, in response, Councilwoman Diller, I've already agreed to do that, so I don't think we're having issues till to discuss if that is your sole discussion. The other aspect that you brought up is that council hasn't had a chance to discuss it generally. I understand that. But in order for us to evaluate it, I need to address the issues which council brought up, which was the fiscal cost, that it should not be controlled by the county executive branch of government. And thirdly, that there be no pontification, as I said, that's not an issue I can discuss. And there's another one I can't remember. But I can address three of those four issues. And for me to do this without requesting money in advance, I'm going to exercise the same right that any citizen has, standing with a smartphone, behind the bar, behind the bench, and making a tape at my own expense. And I'm sorry if you disagree with my doing it this way, but I took an oath to office. It includes transparency and openness. You've got to execute your oath as you see it best, and I'm going to do the best I can as well. And I see it as part of our duty to the public. And also, it's not like it's advanced technology. It's simply moving us into the late part of the 20th century.
I want to recognize that Councilman Taggert has joined us, and we are discussing Councilman Weiner's proposal to have tonight's meeting videotaped of the council session beginning at 6:30. Councilman Reddick?
It doesn't matter. Two Italians, I'll go first.
You're old.
No, I think that, you know, we have committee forums within this council, and committees discuss various new ideas, where we've been, where we are today, where we feel we should go. And in my mind, it's not a question that everybody's going to agree or disagree with the end result of having the council meetings, you know, videoed or shown live. But I have to agree with Councilman Smiley, Councilman Diller, that I think the matter which it's being gone about is like putting the cart before the horse. Because we've gone from a committee forum of this council and an idea, and now we've got the personal funding of an initiative to basically evaluate as to whether we want to do this or not. So, I kind of express a concern there that if we as council, having committee meetings and having recommendations, feel that there should be an evaluation and we should fund that evaluation, I think that's the proper way to go about it. But to have one council, out of the members of council, to fund such an initiative, sort of a pilot program, to evaluate something that we're supposed to be evaluating in the first place, I just think that the cart's before the horse. I don't think we're at that venture yet.
Mr. Chair, thank you. I appreciate that concern. The expression, "You're damned if you do and you're damned if you don't," I think applies well here. Because if I come before this council and ask for some budget to do a demo project under the Technology Committee, which I chair, it was clear to me that that money, that funding would not be possible. I'd be pleased not to fund this out of my own pocket, I promise you. And if you tell me that you'll support a demo project funding through this council, I'd be pleased and honored to join you in that initiative rather than paying it out of my own funds. But it just seemed as if there were a lot of impediments being put into the opportunity for us to evaluate this, and I wanted to remove the impediment of funding. I'm happy to go the way of this council funding. And until that time, I'm just going to exercise the same right that any citizen has, standing in the audience or sitting in the audience with a smartphone.
Any other councilperson has a comment to make on this, a question? Councilman Reddick?
Thank you. Councilman Weiner, I appreciate your passion for this, for what you, in the past years, and all that you've, effort you've been putting forward. But, you know, not too long ago, we put an audio in. And is the difference between what we say on audio and what we're going to say on a screen or a video, is there going to be any difference in the words? Because if people can understand what we're going to be saying, not what we're going to be going, or what we look like, or what kind of clothes we're wearing, they're going to be listening to our words. So, that's the more important thing.
Mr. President, may I respond?
Sure. Councilman Weiner?
Thank you. Your question is a good one. If there's an audio track, wouldn't the video track also be the same audio track? And why do we need to look at each other or have the public see that? And the question, if I could summarize first, would be, a picture says a thousand words. You can listen, but it adds so much more understanding to the public to be able to see the demeanor, to see the expression. And the cost is de minimis. The public that I've heard from, and you may have heard from different, are overwhelmingly in favor of videotaping for later broadcast on a video link next to the audio link. But I need for you to see what it looks like, which is why I'm distributing to each of you a DVD link, and then you can determine, or get input from whomever you like, as to whether or not the audio link lacks the dimension of a video link. I think you'll agree once you see it.
I don't think so.
Councilwoman Kilpatrick?
Could I?
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Councilman Reddick.
I don't think so, what you just finally said. The other is, you said a picture's a thousand words. Sure. If it's an action-type picture. But if you're just standing there like those guys up there on that wall, there's nothing there. There's nothing, no words coming out.
Mr. President?
Councilman Weiner?
Yes. I'll retract the picture, but I'll make up my own new expression. A video link speaks a thousand words when compared to an audio link. And I just made that up because the older expression doesn't apply in the 21st century.
Councilwoman Kilpatrick?
Thank you. When we first started talking about this, I thought the issue was real time. And I think that, for some reason, either I'm very mistaken or we've really gotten away from what this was. I mean, we did, when I first came, we did, you know, eventually get the audio on there, which was delayed, which we seemed to be able to do fairly easily. We were told, I believe, at that time that it would be harder to do a real-time, live broadcast. So, I guess whether we did it in audio or whether we did it in video, somehow we've lost the concept that I thought we were looking for, was to do a live broadcast that somebody could sit home and listen to, not wait until the next morning. And the other thing was, I just wasn't overjoyed when I opened up the link and saw that it was on YouTube. I just don't know that worldwide is where I thought we were going.
Yes, may I reply?
Councilman Taggert, then, Councilman Weiner.
Oh, I know. This is a direct reply?
Yes, it's a direct reply.
Then I have to defer to the chairman.
Go right ahead, Councilman Weiner.
Thank you very much. The first point you made, Councilwoman Kilpatrick, is that you thought we were talking about a live feed as opposed to a delayed feed. Number one, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought, I read in the paper that you said that you would support a delayed feed, but you had a problem with a live feed, and that there were more costs involved with a live feed. If you didn't say that, then I apologize in advance.
Yeah, and I don't remember saying that. I mean, I have qualms both ways. I can see the good and I can see the bad, and I, you know, I mean, I just, I thought we were going for live feed. That was...
Okay. As I said, because of what I thought I heard you say, I'm reworking, as I've already said, the concept so that it would be just like the audio link. It would be a deferred link, which reduces the cost significantly, because most people may not be available to sit down just when we're speaking. But at their own pleasure, they can watch it on their own time. We live in a world where we have on-demand television and YouTube. And that segues me into the next point. YouTube is a very inexpensive way to provide video. This is the way the entire world is going because the costs have reduced now to where council can have a YouTube station for $15. It's not cost-effective to do it any other way. And if you speak to anyone in technology, they'll tell you, the way to do it is to put it on YouTube and then to upload it to a link.
Councilman Smiley?
Yeah. I just want to...
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. You have a Councilman Taggert.
You should have took it where you did.
My apologies. Go ahead, Councilman Taggert.
I don't care. It didn't matter. I was only going to make a few brief comments. Of course, Councilman Weiner knows that I share a lot of the passions with open government and being open and accessible, and that's truly been something, you know, I've always done since I've been here. There's a lot of valid comments been made here today around the table. I got here late, so I guess I missed a couple of them. I'm sorry, but I was dealing with constituent issues in my office. But I think you need to heed a lot of those comments that you've heard here, and I kind of believe you have. One thing that I may have misunderstood in what you were saying, and I'm going to put this back to the Protém also, as he'll be running the meeting tonight, but I hope I didn't hear you saying that you're going to be jockeying between your seat as the councilman and the audience to videotape the meetings tonight, because that would be very disruptive and very inappropriate, and I hope that actions would not be allowed, but...
Yes. Mr. President, may I respond?
Go right ahead.
Thank you. I'm sorry you missed the first part of the meeting. The camera person from OK Video, which was paid for out of my own pocket or my campaign funds, will be positioned where anyone else in the audience would be. And it probably is, you know, strategic location, but even though we do not have a rule that limits who appears, I don't want to create what I see as a diversionary issue. And so, I'll direct the camera person to be behind the bar in the public area in order to do the video. But I personally will not be involved at all, so there won't be any disruption by my moving back and forth from the cameraman to my seat.
We've had quite an extensive discussion on this issue.
I have a seat on the gym.
Learned quite a bit from it. And I had said to council to council earlier that we probably need some legal guidance because Councilman Weiner did mention his legal protections as it relates to this issue. And the clerk of council also sort of chimed in, offering that it's, in fact, you're going to be paying for this from your campaign funds. There should be a disclaimer. Additionally, council to council has said that council has the authority to deny this taken from going forward with the motion from council, seconded by council, and a vote taken by council that you would not be able to video this meeting tonight.
Okay.
I yield to council to council.
Okay. Fine.
Carol Doolin, council to council. Excuse me, I have 25 books here. We do have one rule that speaks to the news media, and that's a rule nine that says the press is permitted to air, record, and report any council meeting. Other public attendees are limited to reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions and stuff I have presiding off. I don't have the rules for access to the council website, so I can't comment on that. I do have Title 15, that's campaign expenditures and the disclaimer, but again, I'm not an expert on campaign law, but I would make this available to whoever is interested. And there is a plethora of information from the Attorney General's Office of what it means to have public access, which I've not had time to go through. So, again, the presiding officer would set reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions that it can, but it doesn't define the press or the media as to access, and I don't know the levels for how this thing...
May I reply?
Sure.
Thank you. I'll be happy to defer to any legal opinion from our council to council. And if election law finds that this is not a legitimate expense, I'll be happy to reimburse forensic Bob Weiner from my own personal funds, as well as not only for the past $150 which I expended, but also for the $150 which I'll expend today. As for disclaimer, I have complied, in my opinion, with all constitutional legal requirements for disclaimer, both on the video link by stating that it was paid for by forensic Bob Weiner. And I continue to state it publicly now at this time and any further time.
Councilman Smiley?
Yeah, I yield to Councilman Taggert. I just, I just...
I'm sorry.
I yield to him earlier, so back to me. Yeah, I just want to say, because, you know, a couple other comments were made as to video versus just the sound. And I just want to, I'm going to go on record right now, and I'll probably do it again in the future as we discuss. I'm the same everywhere I am. So, if anybody thinks that by putting a camera out there in front of me to film me is going to change my demeanor, my tone, my comments, or my responses, you're wasting a lot of time and thought in the process. Because I am what I am, and you're going to get what you get, whether the camera's on or off. Simple as that. So, I really, whatever the council ends up with, I'm fine with, because it's not going to change this one.
Thank you, Councilman Smiley. Councilman Street has joined us. We've been in a discussion for the last 40 minutes or so regarding Councilman Weiner's proposal to video tonight's council meeting. I've heard objections from probably the majority of council members present. Council to Council Doolin has just said that council could make a motion here, but I would be the presiding officer this evening, with the absence of President Bullock, and I would yield to the majority of council members. From what I've heard so far, the majority of council members are not happy with being videoed tonight, tonight's meeting. So, if there's objection, I think that the videoing tonight would be limited. I would say that from the floor, that we would limit the video from OK Video, the vendor, to a reasonable amount of time. But I'm not comfortable personally with having the council meeting vetoed with all the discussions we've had so far in committee. Council members not really deciding that it's the way they want to go. We're in a democracy here. Sometimes we win, sometimes we lose. I can tell you that from personal experience. It's always been that way. But I sort of see this as a little bit of a backdoor way to get it done anyway against the wishes of the majority of council, and I think I would have to agree with Councilwoman Diller. It's probably not the best way to go forward with this, but since the responsibility rests with the presiding officer, which will be me this evening, I would ask council members for a reasonable amount of time that the video can go on, given the fact that we have a baseline where speakers are given three minutes, and I don't know, that may be somewhat too restrictive. But I don't feel that we should allow a video, given the option that we have, or the presiding officer has, to move forward for full video tonight, having, getting this information... getting this information at 11:00 here at this meeting. Councilwoman Weiner?
Thank you. Mr. President, Pro Tem. The whole idea of a demo project would not be to limit the time, but to video from the first moment to the last moment. Editing it would defeat the purpose of presenting it as it occurred and would subject it to legitimate concerns that it had been edited. As far as the issue of whether or not this body, or yourself as the presiding officer, has the legal or constitutional authority to clear the room, if you will, of all persons, I'm going to take that under advisement. I'm going to seek my own legal counsel. I will not be proceeding tonight with the video, but after I speak with my own legal counsel, I will give more advance notice, but I'll be armed with a legal opinion, which I think will say that it would chill the public's right to a public hearing if any one individual who happened to have a camera was excluded from the room. I do this under protest, and I think this is ill-advised, but counsel will do what it will do. I'm trying to be as courteous as I can, although I feel by withdrawing, I'm doing something that I'm not compelled to do. But I do it out of respect for this body.
Thank you, Councilman Weiner. And I certainly can't make the legal argument with you. I would just urge you to not film tonight, or if you are going to film, I would use the advice given to me by counsel to counsel and limit that filming, that filming, I'm sorry. And I think there's probably a difference in the fact that you're going to film it and then you're also going to distribute it, and I think that's where some issues that I'm not very clear on. I think there's a difference there. And, but I appreciate your, your understanding of counsel's position, the majority of council, and your cooperation on this issue.
And if I may respond just to that point. I don't think there is a distinction between videoing a portion and videoing the entire hearing. I don't think there's any distinction between any citizen audiotaping or videotaping from the audience what we do. And I think it would be a chill on the First Amendment for this council to take that position. Having said that, I won't agree to video a portion of it. That would defeat the purpose. If and when I proceed, it'll be after speaking to my own private legal counsel, and it will be the entire video. And again, all I'm trying to do is provide an opportunity for counsel to evaluate the benefit of video. And of course, to go back to Councilman Bell, if this body wants to provide some funding for the, the initiative that I undertook through the Technology Committee meeting, I'd be pleased to go in that route. But I don't want to be a prisoner of exercising my freedom of speech to a beta test of what I feel is a constitutional right of freedom of speech.
And I agree with you. I'm not trying to challenge that at all. I just see this as a member of council, and most, the majority of council members are not supportive of the idea. You offer counsel an option, well, if you don't want me to pay for it, then counsel can pay for it. There's probably an option that counsel is also agreeable to. So even though you made this as an alternative to what you're planning to do, it just seems to me that counsel's not going to buy into that either. So you're presenting it as either or.
Right.
And counsel is, what I'm hearing, is neither of the above.
Right. Thank you. Just responding to your point specifically. Your point was that counsel would not agree to it, whether counsel would fund it because they wouldn't agree to that.
No, they may or may not.
They may or may not.
Right.
And I'm happy to discuss that, but I got the feeling that counsel wanted me to jump through some hoops in some preconditions that I didn't feel comfortable jumping through. Because like the internet, I believe that this should be available to the public and that no one should be a guardian or an owner just of this process, and it should be open to all of us. As far as videotaping, as you know, when you participated, I videotaped the Technology Committee meeting last Tuesday. You and Councilman Cartier sat in the room, and I presented as a beta test to, to my constituents. And also, I will give each of you tonight a DVD so that you can look at it. I wanted to also provide as by way of a beta test what it looks like to have a whole video meeting, but to edit it down, which is what happens when the press comes, would be, would defeat the purpose, because we want to be able to provide an unedited, unexpurgated version to the public. As far as anyone's right to video a whole meeting, if we don't do this, it's only a matter of time before the News Journal, or WDEL, or some other enterprising entity decides to videotape all of us from the audience and sell commercials to underwrite the cost. And it wouldn't just necessarily be limited to county council, it could be to any hearings. So I think it's better for us to get control of it, to make sure that it's unexpurgated, unedited, so that if there is an edited version by someone that has an agenda, we can say this is the official version, and it's on our website, unedited, unexpurgated.
Thank you, Councilman Weiner. And I think you also understand that you make some very valid points, and you're obviously passionate about this issue, but it remains every council member's position, legislative prerogative to agree or disagree. And that's the bottom line here, I think, that may be missing. All these things that you're saying, and the beauty of it, and the value and so forth, and a lot of this is really packaged as it's all about transparency, and to the extent it is. But someone mentioned earlier, there's a lot of good in it, there's a lot of bad in it. And for me, with all of the reasons you made why it should go forward, I still hold there, there's still enough things that are bad about it that I don't, I just don't agree with it. And I reserve that legislative prerogative to disagree. And that's, that's the case, that's how we operate.
I agree. If I could adjust just that point.
If you adjust it in the next 30 seconds.
I can do that.
Then we can move on.
Whether or not the majority agrees or disagrees is a subject in and of itself, because let's say 12 of the 13 members of this council disagree. That doesn't necessarily make it a constitutional or legal position or opinion. But until it's clear in my mind, I'm going to yield to the majority, because I don't have an opinion yet on this. If it turns out that anyone in the audience could use their smartphone and videotape it and sell commercials on it, but edit it down for their own agenda, and that I could hire someone out of my own pocket to do the same, or counsel could do it officially and make sure that there's an unexpurgated official version that's tied to our audio track, then I think that would be the better route to go. I'm going to take baby steps, including backing off tonight, because another concern was raised, and I want to try to address every concern.
I appreciate your cooperation and recognizing the wishes of the majority of council here tonight. And it's off the table, but I want to be clear of what my offer was to you, and if you're going to move it, you're not going to do it, then I think it's all the better.
Right. I'm not going to do it.
So, Councilman Smiley, and then we're going to wrap this up.
I don't want to do an.
Yeah, I just, I just want to say upfront, Councilman Weiner, thank you for voluntarily withdrawing your, your planned videotaping tonight based on the concerns of council, and I appreciate your moving forward to get some additional guidance and information.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask counsel to counsel for final comments on this particular issue.
Thank you, Mr. Pro Tem. Carol Doolin, counsel to counsel. I, I just wanted to clarify that Mr. Weiner's comment about a First Amendment right is, of course, correct, that anyone taking a videotape in the audience would be no different than, than the council member. I'm not, I have no intention whatsoever of commenting on policy. I did want to distinguish between any rules and regulations that are as to posting on the website. That was, that was what I was trying to distinguish, not the First Amendment.
And in response to that, I'm just doing this as a demo project, so rather than posting it to the website, I posted it to a YouTube station, which I purchased, and then sent it out to my constituents, and now I'm going to give a DVD from that YouTube to the members of council for them to take a look at and think about, and provide me some thoughtful input back.
Thank you, Councilman Weiner. Any further comment, questions for members of council? Seeing none, any comment from members of the public? Councilman Powers, I'm sorry, I just want to recognize the fact that you are here. Thank you very much. Any, any comment? Seeing none, is there any, any other thing under other? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Motion adjourned.
Second. Thank you very much.